I think it is, right, seventeen members?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. My name is Pamela Goodwin, and I'm a partner at the law firm of Saul Ewing. I'm also a citizen member of the New Jersey Clean Water Council, and I serve as Chair of the Council. The Clean Water Council of New Jersey was established by statute in 1967, which means that the council has been in existence now for forty-six years. The council's charge is to serve as an uncompensated advisory board to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. Our mission is to improve the state's program for controlling water pollution. We're made up of seventeen members, representing a broad spectrum of state interests. I will introduce you to each of our members after we've had the opportunity to hear from the Commissioner and Assistant Commissioner Sakurka. We're required to hold annual public hearings on topics of our choosing, which facilitate our ability to advise the Commissioner. Normally, these hearings are held in late fall, but in today's circumstances, you can see, we've chosen a beautiful day in spring. Normally, this is when we would be reporting back to the Commissioner. Why then are we here today? Because in 2012, at the request of Commissioner Martin and his staff, who were then very much engaged in responding to the aftermath of Hurricane Sandy, the council determined that it would defer its public hearing until now. The purpose of the deferral was to allow the department to fully focus on the task at hand, as well as to provide a forum for the department and the public to later sort through the environmental and economic implications of this storm, including the availability of federal funds for controlling water pollution and protecting water quality in the future. We have titled today's hearing "A Resilient New Jersey: Adapting Water Infrastructure to the New Normal." By this, we are hoping to gather testimony that builds upon the records developed by this council in public hearings over the past four years relating to climate change, water infrastructure deterioration, and financing options for water infrastructure improvement. There are many of us who do not believe that the impact that Hurricane Sandy had on our water supply systems was an aberration, but rather a harbinger of what the future may hold if we do not use this opportunity to assess, adapt, and rebuild for the future, not the past. Commissioner Martin and many of the members of his staff have been working around the clock in the months immediately following Hurricane Sandy, restoring the state to normalcy. And even now, six months later, in the midst of determining what normalcy means, this remains the number-one agenda item for the department and its leadership. With that as an introduction, it is my great privilege and pleasure to introduce you to the Commissioner of the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Bob Martin, who will set the stage for where the department is headed on these very important issues. Thank you, Commissioner Martin.
Good morning. How's everybody? Thank you, Pam. Pam summarized it extremely well. Our focus has been very much on post-Sandy, both recovery and rebuilding. And again, on behalf of the Governor, I welcome all of you today, and I welcome the work that's done by the council in focusing on water quality issues overall in the state, and we continue to focus on those as a priority as we move forward here. I want to thank both the New Jersey Clean Water Council and the Water Supply Advisory Council for your service to the state. I appreciate you guys rescheduling this event from Sandy, from post-Sandy. We were buried. We still continue to be buried. Our focus of this organization has shifted almost entirely on issues around Sandy. The rebuilding of the state and recovery of the state is just a massive effort. You've heard the Governor out there talking about it on a constant basis, and there's reason for that. We still have a lot of work to be done, and I'm going to summarize some of both the damage and our focus going forward. You know, one of the things that we've seen, you know, in all of this is that our aging infrastructure in the state, our water infrastructure, has lacked both historically adequate investments in that infrastructure. That infrastructure during the storm and after the storm has indicated the vulnerabilities we have in the state, both on the water supply and the wastewater treatment aspects of infrastructure of the state. It also demonstrated our stormwater system vulnerabilities in our communities. So we have a lot of focus, we have a lot of work to do, we have a lot of focus of this organization around those key topics. And that's where the work of Michelle Sakurka and her team are going to be over the next two years, is very heavily how we shape around those vulnerabilities and how we focus. So when, you know, when we start talking about how do we tackle this problem, we're clearly going to be talking about vulnerabilities, we're going to be talking about long-term, how do we create resiliency for the infrastructure of the state? It's an important part of our planning and our efforts overall with making this happen. Our approach also has to be on a holistic approach. We can't just focus on one piece of the problem. We've got to look at all the pieces. You've heard me talk about that since day one, both the holistic approach, asset management, long-term capital investments in this infrastructure. You're always going to hear me talk about that. Now, that's, again, prior experience and prior knowledge that I have about infrastructure. I believe that those things require both the investment and the focus as public policy long-term. Let me first turn to Superstorm Sandy and the impact it had to the state. Obviously, massive devastation to the state overall. Again, we're continuing to focus on fixing those problems and resiliency of all infrastructure across the state. While today we're talking about resiliency of infrastructure around water, I mean, everything from roads to homes to businesses to buildings to public safety organizations and infrastructure across the state is extremely important. More than 346,000 homes were damaged from this storm. You know, things like even fifty-eight homes washed from, you know, Manalokee into Barnegat Bay. I mean, just staggering that thought of those kinds of things happening. Thousands of families have been displaced. Over 1,400 boats were either abandoned or were sunken in a lot of places across the entire state. All of you saw the pictures, boats sitting in the middle of roads, sitting on railroad tracks, sitting in people's yards, sitting on people's decks, all the rest of it. The entire coastline of beaches experienced significant erosion. So again, major problems along the coast. Nearly 100 wastewater treatment facilities around the state were damaged, and more than 400 water supply systems had challenges, community water systems had challenges in the state. While the vast majority of those were power-related, it still created havoc for us trying to manage through those problems at the time of the storm and shortly after. The damage for all water infrastructure exceeds $2.6 billion, a staggering number on just one portion of the problem of the state has challenges on rebuilding the state going Before I go a little bit further on some of the issues around it, I want to talk about some of the steps we took kind of before, during, and after the storm. Before the storm, we focused on a whole host of things: updating emergency contact lists for internal and external communications, testing remote access and communication systems to ensure that they are on good working order, placing operating emergency response personnel on call and review emergency procedures, both on the state and the water providers and wastewater treatment plants, ensuring that all supplies, including water treatment, chemicals, fuel, were stocked and secured to maximum extent as possible for all these facilities. We also asked all these facilities to test auxiliary power sources and generators to ensure that they were working properly. You know, even with all that, we still had power issues that were unprecedented. Again, one of the things we realized at the time was that, you know, while a lot of these facilities had generators, we also expected that most generators, most facilities would come back on the grid within a few days. What we found out was a lot of the supply of fuel, in a lot of cases, was three days, five days, or seven days. Guess what? A lot of those facilities weren't back up in three with power, external power from the grid. So we started getting into, we had to get into a panic mode of having to move diesel fuel and other fuels around the state to help those facilities keep those up and running. We reached out right after the storm to 369 of the state wastewater treatment facilities to determine their impact, that they had had, and offer of assistance. We also sent out teams out to multiple facilities, either because we didn't get a response back from them, which we realized they had washed out completely, or that they were trying to fight fires within their own organization, trying to keep the facilities up and running. So we sent teams out there to help support them and help back them up during or shortly after the storm. What we realized that there were 94 wastewater treatment plants in 21 counties that had impacts because of the storm. Impacts included inadequate treatment, the need for fuel or generators due to power shortages, and broken sewer mains or other operational issues. In many instances, impacts extended beyond the treatment facility to pump stations and wastewater collection systems. Our most significant impacts were Passaic Valley Sewerage Treatment Commission facility and Middlesex County's Utility Authority's Sayerville Pump Station. I visited both those facilities in the short hours after that, after the storm, realizing that both facilities had been completely flooded out. PVSC's operations pretty much had been wiped out, including most of their buildings have been flooded. More importantly, or more damagingly, was the facilities itself had been completely flooded out, which basically stopped all operations. PVSC serves over 1.4 million people and manages sludge for more than 100 in-state and out-of-state wastewater treatment facilities. The impact resulted in the release of over hundreds of millions of gallons a day of raw sewage. It's both Passaic River and the Raritan River and some of the other rivers around that area. So again, the devastation was significant at that point in time. Our challenges were trying to make sure that sewage, besides the damage it was causing to the rivers and ecosystem, that those were not backing up into homes and businesses in so many communities. So our challenges were staggering at the time, trying to work with those facilities to make that happen. What you saw was a very collaborative effort overall between those facilities, the state, EPA, Army Corps of Engineers, everyone jumped in, FEMA, we all jumped in together to try to keep those facilities up and running after the storm. There still remains issues in 11 municipalities on specific problems with their systems. We continue to work with remediation efforts on those facilities right now. On the stormwater front, we also saw significant challenges as well. Of the 82 hardest-hit towns, about 30 needed repairs. Still, 20 are still, we're doing assessments on those 20 towns. The impact on those stormwater systems in those towns is some of the problems we're having, and some of the flooding, some of the towns along Barnegat Bay and other areas are seeing right now. Again, some of it was just simply sand stuffed in there and other debris. In some cases, the water and other impact of the storm has significantly damaged those systems. So there's millions of dollars' worth of work on those as well that have to be focused As New Jersey moves forward to rebuilding these systems and infrastructure, it's essential we rebuild with a vision of resiliency and reliability for future catastrophes. You're going to hear me say that a lot: resiliency for the future. That's the vision I have, that's the vision the Governor has. Right after the storm, the Governor said to me, "We've got to make sure that we can find a way to build in mitigation standards, that we could build in resiliency for the long haul for these facilities." You know, it's bad that it happened once. We've got to look to the future to make sure it doesn't happen again, or we've at least minimized the damage next time around if it does happen for these kind of storms. Rebuilding is the priority. The Governor's made that clear. We're going to rebuild this state, and a big piece of rebuilding this state has to be rebuilding the infrastructure within this state. Michelle's team of Division of Water Quality will provide oversight for wastewater treatment facilities. It's been conducting outreach, investigating funding options for those facilities, developing new guidance that will aid in rebuilding New Jersey's water infrastructure. And they've been working to expedite permits and treatment works approvals. So again, focusing with all these facilities to make sure we can get them back up and running, and also trying to find ways for money from both the federal government and leveraging EIT and other infrastructure of the state, financial infrastructure of the state, to make that work. Let me briefly talk about some of the other things we've been doing that focus on water quality overall. And this deals with water quality in our rivers, our streams, the bay areas, overall. This focuses on debris removal. After the Superstorm Sandy, we focused on debris, terrestrial debris, as we called it, right after the storm. That meant getting debris off the streets. I was driving my team crazy every single day, and I said, "Get the debris off the streets." I was screaming at night and day. The debris was a critical, you know, element of making sure from both a safety, a health and safety issue in the state, we got that debris off the streets. Jane Kozinski, my Assistant Commissioner, I'm sure is ready still to pull out her hair. I see Jane in the back. Jane, you need, I'll give you a hand for that. What you did was fabulous. Jane worked with all the towns to coordinate that movement of debris overall. You know, that was a massive task, and in three months, the state moved 8 million cubic yards of debris off the streets. It's staggering compared to any other disaster before. New Jersey just made that happen overall. I give the mayor's credit, they stepped up, the local towns stepped up, they delivered on that. The second phase that we're working on right now is what we call wet debris. And that's dealing with the water quality and helping deal with some of the flooding issues and some of the other things we're seeing overall. Wet debris is all the debris that's washed in from the storm. As I mentioned earlier, Barnegat Bay had 58 houses washed into it. Eight of those houses are fairly well intact. The other, guess what happened to the other 50? There's pieces all over Barnegat Bay. Besides, there's refrigerators, cars, microwave ovens, pick whatever else you want, it's in Barnegat Bay. We also, FEMA also estimated there's up to 10 million cubic yards of sand that washed into Barnegat Bay as well. Barnegat Bay and some of the lakes, the coastal lakes, the rivers around there, Shark River, other places, there's sand been pushed everywhere besides debris into these, which contributes to, the shelling of those continues to help contribute to some of the flooding on the back bay areas of some of these towns. It obviously is, it does affect water quality long-term, so we need to get that debris out. It also is a major public safety issue. Boating is very big on a lot of these rivers, these bays, areas. We've got to get that debris out overall. So we continue to focus on that as we move forward. The cleanup of the waterways, we've hired three contractors, literally starting from Bergen County all the way around to the Delaware Bay, all the way up to the Delaware Memorial Bridge. So the entire coastline, we've got companies going and picking up debris and worrying about how we're going to move that sand. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, next couple of weeks, you'll be seeing the major houses taken out of the water, and we're now working with the Army Corps of Engineers of how we're going to move that sand from Barnegat Bay, hopefully getting a lot of that put back on the beaches as we move forward. We expect the majority of our waterways will be open this summer, and we're asking everyone out there to use common sense and caution when boating. So again, we're very optimistic about the work that's being done, but again, we're asking people to please be cautious and focus on what's right, the right things to do out there. Army Corps of Engineers clearing out the intercoastal waterways. Department of Transportation is identifying the state waterways, the channels that need to be cleaned out, and the DEP is directing, we're directing the overall operation to make sure that cleanup occurs overall. Our goal is to have 75% of the waterway debris removed by June 1st. So again, it's a hefty task. We continue to focus on it, and we expect our contractors to keep pushing to make that happen, and they're working seven days a week to make that happen. Let me talk about shore protection as well. You know, as I mentioned earlier, we talked about beaches and all the rest of that. Let me first talk about ocean water quality. Ocean water quality remains very good. One of the challenges we continue to have is debris that's in the ocean as well, washed up from the storm. We continue to work with all the towns and keep the beaches clean this summer, but we do expect some of that debris to continue to wash up over the summer. But the water quality remains excellent, which is good from our point of view. Again, we're going to continue to monitor the beaches and work with them to make sure that's clean. One of the biggest challenges we have is rebuilding the beaches across the state. The one key thing that this storm showed us was that, you know, an engineered beach with dunes protects towns, protects homes, protects businesses, protects infrastructure. We learned that from this storm, and we knew it before, this proved that fact. So from our point of view, the Governor's made it crystal clear, we're going to build a full coastal protection system from top to bottom along the entire coast. Congress and the President has approved over $1 billion to rebuild that entire coastline. That's absolutely critical for us long-term. When we talk about, you know, rebuilding infrastructure, water infrastructure and other infrastructures, we've got to protect that infrastructure long-term. To be able to do that, we've got to have a coastal protection system. That includes engineered beaches, that includes dunes in the right places, but it needs then be maintained long-term. The Governor's committed to that, I'm committed to that, and we're working with the Army Corps to get that plan together, to use that money that Congress has provided to us to make sure that gets done going forward. As New Jersey moves forward to rebuilding these systems and infrastructure overall, it's essential we rebuild with increased resiliency for the future catastrophes. I've said it before, and we keep saying it, resiliency is the name of the game, and we're going to continue to focus on that. Rebuilding will remain our priority. We're going to continue to work closely with the Governor's Office of Recovery and Rebuilding. Mark Ferzan is the Executive Director to that program. Mark is the overall quarterback for the state on rebuilding the state. Mark works directly for the Governor, is the quarterback in that respect. I work directly for the Governor, we're working together as a team to make sure all these programs hang together, make sure we're both getting the money for the federal agencies that we need to get the job done, but also at the same time, it's a coordinated effort overall, so that we're doing all the right things in rebuilding infrastructure and rebuilding the state as we move forward. Three areas that I'm responsible for, for the Governor, as we move forward around rebuilding, including environmental infrastructure work overall, which includes primarily the water infrastructure. Michelle Sakurka is my lead in that area. I'm also responsible for natural and cultural resources of the state to make sure we're rebuilding everything from habitat to parks to other areas of the state. Then I'm also responsible for statewide hazard mitigation. Again, looking at how we're going to do multiple programs on that front, everything to support elevations, and a bigger part of that is to support the buyouts in several parts of the state. The Governor's already talked about, we're going to spend at least $250 million on buyouts of homes that are in areas that need to be bought out, that are either been substantially damaged or continuously have damaged over a long period of time, that should be bought out in certain areas. We expect to buy out at least 1,000 homes along the coastal area, or areas that are tidally flooded. Again, part of the work that's going on with Michelle's team will be building new guidelines for auxiliary power, reconstruction, and emergency response planning and implementation. We're working with the federal and state agencies to maximize funding for water utilities to address technical issues and facilities that turn into a more resilient state overall. Environmental Infrastructure Trust will be critical to this overall. Dave Zimmer, who's the Executive Director of that program, is absolutely critical and part of our team as we move forward. We're making sure that we're working together very closely to make that happen. EIT, over the last, you know, over the last 25 years, has had over 1,000 projects and totaling over $6 billion worth of water quality and public health-related environmental infrastructure projects. We see numerous projects coming out of this, very specifically related to wastewater treatment plant and overall water supply. Again, we planned on focusing on CSOs as well, which play a role in the amount of water that's going into wastewater treatment facilities, and again, focusing on clean water to make sure that's happening. Rebuilding New Jersey's wastewater infrastructure that's reliable, resilient, and cost-effective to the future, future natural disasters, is dependent upon implementation of sound asset management practices. Sound asset management practices. In addition, long-term capital investments. Those have to happen long-term, and we plan on working with the communities, municipalities, and all the waste, both water supply and wastewater facilities across the state, as we look to make sure those things happen long-term. You've heard me say it before, and again, I emphasize, the vulnerabilities we're experiencing now in this last storm, again, we don't want those repeated. And I hope we don't see another Sandy anytime in the near future. But again, if we don't plan for those, if we don't prepare ourselves, you know, we expose ourselves to that risk in the future if we don't. In closing, I want to thank all of you for your focus on it, I want to thank the council's focus on their work. I look forward to you taking your testimony today and getting input today and getting report back from you on this critical issue. Michelle Sakurka and her team will be working with you as we start framing out the future, and Michelle will talk to you in a lot more details of the things we're working on right now. We're working with EPA, we're working with FEMA, we're working with HUD, we're working with a lot of other federal agencies to do a lot of the planning necessary to make this happen. We must rebuild this state, we must rebuild the resiliency, and so I need all of you to help us keep that focus from DEP. That's my commitment to you, and that's my commitment to the state, and that's the Governor's commitment to the state. Thank you very much.
Assistant Commissioner Michelle Sakurka needs little introduction in this room, I am sure. She has served as the state's Assistant Commissioner for Water Resources since February 2012. She came to the position by way of the department's Growth and Green Energy Division, and while the water regulations were relatively new to her at the time, she has proved a quick study. While some experience trial by fire, I think it is fair to say that Assistant Commissioner Sakurka herself, a lawyer, has been tried by water. Michelle will provide you with an understanding of how the state's water resources were impacted by the storm and lessons learned for the future. It is my privilege to introduce to you NJDEP Assistant Commissioner Michelle Sakurka.
Okay, now I believe all I do is click forward and my PowerPoint will work along with me, so let's see how we go. And then go the other way. And here we go, all right. Thanks, everyone. Thanks so much for your time and attention this morning on these really critical issues that we're facing with the state. Before I start, I want to do a couple of introductions, because I have my team in the room today, and without this team, we couldn't be doing the awesome things that we are doing. So Michelle Putnam is my Director for Water Quality. Fred Sickles is our Director for Water Supply and Geosciences. Angela Poddy- And Jill Lepoti toward the back is our Director for Monitoring and Standards. I just want to thank them because I've made their lives a living hell for the last six months. So their support has been tremendous. So we picked this title today because this is really the key issue facing us. Commissioner Martin used the word resiliency numerous, numerous times. We're living that world. We're breathing that world. We're swimming in that world. And the key to it really is good asset management. So what I'd like to do is walk you through, you know, where we were, where we're going, and how we're going to get there. Where we were on October 28th, we had a lot of heavy initiatives on our plate already at that point in time. We were dealing with the concept of comprehensive water resource management. What would it mean in the future to take a more holistic, comprehensive approach to dealing with our water issues throughout the state of New Jersey? Barnegat Bay, the governor's 10-point plan, we were a few years into executing on that plan. We continue to execute on that plan. You know, though, some of that execution has changed a bit, given the things we've experienced. CSO is a tremendous stressor for the state of New Jersey. We were ready to roll out our CSO strategy for the state, which right now, we're, we're back in action and moving forward with a draft permit, our first state draft permit coming out later this week. The water supply plan, Fred and his team have worked feverishly on the water supply plan. And while it's not public yet, the documentation and the information gathered through the process helps to inform everything we do every day. Asset management, we'll be talking a lot about. The Integrated Report and C-1 Stream, Jill and her team have worked tirelessly in identifying the stressors to our waters. And then the big questions come, how do we address that? You know, to TMDL or not? Are there other better ways to do it? But then, as we all know, October 29th, we had a, a nice, a nice, an amazing situation hit us by Sandy. And Sandy truly exposed the infrastructure's vulnerabilities throughout the state of New Jersey. And yet, what it did do is it reaffirmed that our priorities, all the things we were working on up to that day, it reaffirmed that we were absolutely in the right direction for the future of New Jersey. And all we needed to do was shift it into the paradigm of post-Sandy, and we can still accomplish a lot. You know, we learned that CSOs and reducing infiltration and inflow are going to be key to resiliency in the future. O and M under asset management and moving forward on identifying criticalities, emergency response planning, and stormwater issues. I want to give you a sense, the commissioner told you about the damages, $2.6 billion overall. We conducted an extensive, an extensive survey and assessment of our facilities. And the numbers are broken down a bit here, but you could see $1.7 billion is what's predicted for making our systems more resilient for the future. And that resiliency, that mitigation could be anything from, you know, just some new alternative energy or a new backup generator to flood walls and very significant flood proofing as part of the recovery. Want to walk you through some lessons learned. We certainly had a few internally and what we experienced in the wake and in the few weeks following the storm, resources. You know, we, we learned right at the beginning that data is key to a recovery. Data is key to a recovery. You know, while we started the Thursday before the storm and gathering information and updating emergency information and checking remote access and things, you know, again, you never thought that people would be without their ability to communicate and everybody being on personal cell phones out in our industry, as opposed to being able to be more readily apt to pick up a phone right at their facility. And, you know, having private phone numbers and home phone numbers and ways to communicate was extremely important. You know, we went through some role definition. We're the water quality people in the state. We're all about making, making sure supply continues and making sure that we're protecting the waters. But what happened during that time is, you know, we had to take on many different roles. We became major troubleshooters during that time. We were, you know, a single line of communication to our facilities. We manned the rock 24/7 for two and a half weeks, which was tremendous. And again, you know, thanks to my 400-plus employees, and I have to tell you, 400-plus employees, we had just shy of 300 who stepped up to that effort to man the rock 24/7 for almost three weeks. Amazing folks. Communications, I touched upon that a little bit, but we need to improve our communications. We need to make sure that we have more resilient two-way communications, not just amongst ourselves in our industry, but all the other people who came to be an important part of that recovery immediately, all our trade associations who stepped up, and, and they reached out to private industry who stepped up. It wasn't just about the state being there. It was about manning this huge force of business people who are out there helping each other, communications in and amongst agencies, how we communicate with our own OEM, and how we communicate with each other. So all of those communications, we've learned that we have opportunities to make them even better for the next time. I think I just missed one. Here we go. And then we had the primary threats to our facilities and what we, what we learned. Power loss was significant. We did, we had facilities who were down two and three weeks. We couldn't move fuel around the state fast enough. Flooding and inundation of systems. And it's amazing when you see pictures of Army Corps and EPA folks literally in dive tanks down in the wells of some of these treatment facilities. You, you can't imagine unless you saw it firsthand. One of the biggest, you know, concerns that I have in terms of a primary threat on how we address this and move forward is taking a business-as-usual mentality. That's something we absolutely cannot do. This is a new paradigm. This is not going to go away. This is not a year from now, you know, we're going to step back and say, oh, we'll never get that again. We have to make sure that we are vigilant and we keep that vigilance up as we do our rebuild. And our biggest challenge, fiscal. Where is this money going to come from? And we are working very hard with our federal partners. I want to thank John, who's here from our Federal Homeland Security. He's one of my key liaisons at the Joint Fields Office through the recovery. He and his team are working with us to help to coordinate federal funding so that we can maximize the federal dollars that are out there. And that takes us to, I'd like to explain how we go through this. How are we rebuilding in the state? The federal framework, and this is a new framework for, for dealing with disasters that the federal government is utilizing for Sandy, is the National Disaster Recovery Framework. Within the framework, there's six recovery support function work teams. There comes the alphabet soup, everybody, the RSFs. And as Commissioner Martin mentioned, he's responsible for certain aspects of that. So of the six, one of those RSFs is infrastructure, and within infrastructure is three components. There is transportation, which Commissioner Simpson heads. There's energy, which President Hanna heads. And then there's environmental infrastructure, which is kind of the catchall of everything outside of that, that Commissioner Martin leads for the governor and that he's asked me to lead for him. And then we have subgroups within that, that RSF working on numerous issues. We have bi-weekly coordination meetings with our, with our partners at the federal government. We have weekly meetings as a team, and we have numerous layers of how we're trying to do things. And we've created sub-work groups to work on, on guidance. And I'll give you a little, actually, right here. We are working on resiliency standards. We're working on auxiliary power. We're working on asset management and emergency response plans. That data I was talking about before, that key data, we're working within our own little world of environmental infrastructure, but also across DEP and across the state with our OIRM partners, those who are responsible for our technology around the state on how we can have better, better data grabs for things. We are addressing those power issues and those fuel distribution issues. And we're working on a lot of cross-agency issues in and among the recovery support groups, but also all the state agencies as well. What we've done so far in our small corner of the world is we've conducted eight roundtables. This was predominantly in our water wastewater arena and water supply and stormwater, but like all water. Because we also, within environmental infrastructure, we have solid waste, and we have our landfills, and we have the chemical refineries, and environmental infrastructure is bigger than water, but obviously our focus today is, is water. In the water world, our discussions have focused on the damage assessments, the status of rebuilding, what types of mitigation measures, and how we're going to fund it. And a big thing we learned, because when PVSC went down, you heard those statistics earlier, PVSC is a major, you know, not just in terms of what they do on the water treatment side, but when it comes to sludge management. And we were trying to, we had to step up and find other ways to deal with, with sludge and be able to send it and process it in other ways. And we learned that we have some capacity issues in that regard in the state that we're trying to, trying to address. Going forward, when we address, how are we going to address these threats from Sandy? So Phase 1 is recovery. And I'll spend a few minutes now kind of digging down into power loss and near-term actions around that. We are working on standards. Right now, our rules talk about, and they're, they're general, and this is why everything I talk about now is going to be guidance documentation. We are not issuing emergency rules. We have combed through our regulations, and we are very comfortable with the fact that our authority exists in order for us to send some guidance out that interprets our rules in a way that will make us more resilient. And you can anticipate that within the next few weeks to couple of months, those guidance documents will be coming out. We've been working long and hard on them, and we've been getting feedback as we've gone along, and we'll have the opportunity for further feedback as, as we continue. But on, on this piece of it, on the power side, we realized when we say, you know, enough energy to ensure continuous operation, because that's what the permit requires, continuous operation, well, what does that, what does that really mean? And we, we were always of the impression that we thought, well, 12 to 24 hours would be, would be adequate. And when we would go out and do our compliance visits, that would be about what we'd be looking for. And we realized that that's no longer the case. But with that comes tremendous challenge, because we can't stockpile fuel, you know? You can't. You're going to create hazardous issues. And the issue of moving fuel around the state. And so we're looking at different ways to, to address that issue, albeit it could be in a regional area where there's certain depots set up, more regional collaboration, but also in terms of backup generation and alternative generation. We're trying to be very open-minded and very broad and comprehensive in our thinking of backup generation. How do we get folks off the grid to make the grid more resilient in and of itself? How do you take a huge plant like PVSC, make them more resilient, maybe get them off the grid? So there's a sludge facility, perfect candidate for combined heat and power. Why don't we consider things like that? These are the types of strategies that we're looking at in terms of resiliency for, for energy in the future. Flood impacts? So now, we know Sandy, what was very interesting is the, the facilities that got inundated with floodwaters was because of the surge. And the surge was just unprecedented. I mean, I don't think, no matter what we, it's very hard to say that you could have really forestood what occurred with the surge and the places that it occurred. We know our biggest vulnerability is the flooding we regularly experience all around the state of New Jersey. We know in Irene, the type of flooding that we experienced and how that impacts. So in our, in our standards, we are looking at interpreting our standards through the construction standards to ensure that we are addressing proper areas for flood impact, whether it be elevation of motors and pumps and, and the generators and making sure that anything that is vulnerable or that is important to keep the facility in a constant state of operation is elevated so that it's not in, in the base. You know, it's interesting, everybody goes around and, you know, where are all the motor controls and everything? They're, they're 40 feet down. Well, when 40 feet down got flooded, 40 feet up, you know, we had some significant challenges. So different, different ways of the facilities, hardening their assets on the inside. The other way is hardening their assets from the outside. And in some situations where maybe you have a facility that is more of a campus setting, something like a flood wall, makes the most economic sense. And while it may sound like, oh my God, a flood wall, well, think of that, if you have 55 separate buildings, you know, running a facility, and if you just look at each one of them individually as its own component, everything you miss in between, like the access, the ability to get in and out, the ability to move things amongst those buildings. So in situations like that, we have to make sure we're being more comprehensive and looking at some of these facilities as a campus versus their, their individual buildings. And this is just an example of some of the things that we are working on in that regard. Addressing threats from Sandy and other future events. So now, when we talk about, you know, more so, how do we become more resilient for the future? We see we have some really tremendous opportunities. And this is where I, I come back and I always say, I was so happy to see that we were moving in the right direction with all the really big initiatives we had seed up on October 28th, because they're the ones we need to make us more resilient as a state. And I think that Sandy offers us the opportunity maybe to bring some new attention, some more financing, and some more sense of urgency to those things that on October 28th, people said, yeah, that's a, a nice to have, but how are we going to get there? And now I think the sense of urgency says, we must get there, and how are we going to do it? We want to take full advantage of the opportunity that Sandy provides us in that regard. Asset management. So we've had one or two prior councils were, were around asset management. I want to thank all of you because what you have provided to us in the past on asset management helped to inform the documents that were the plan that we were getting ready to release the week, you know, that Sandy happened. I want to walk you through some of that and remind us all of the importance of asset management and why it means even more right now. And we have to talk about long-term, long-term benefit. And the thing we find very challenging in government, I know I found it, coming from the outside, what I find very challenging in government is the idea to be comprehensive. Because you know what? Comprehensive planning takes years to accomplish. It's, you know, it's all about the plan, great. But you know what? Planning means nothing if you can't execute and implement. Our goal is to get executing and implementing. So most of you know the assets of the state, and I apologize to Fred because our water systems number is, is a little high there. It's more like 604. But most of you know the assets we have in the state because you live around these assets. You're very familiar with our numbers and, and our distribution between publicly held and privately held and some of the challenges that come along with that. You also know, because you, you live in this world, that there are numerous regulatory authorities that have their hands in asset management or that need to have their hands in asset management for us to be successful. And we've been working across agency with our partners at BPU, at DCA, whether it's about how to finance this, how to regulate it, how to bring it all together. DOT, great example. You know, if DOT is going to be rebuilding a, a major roadway, how about the infrastructure that's underneath it? How do we look at DOT's long-term plan, their capital improvement plan? And how do we align some of our ability to make our infrastructure stronger and have better asset management in tandem with their planning? We know that the grades for our infrastructure in the state of New Jersey are poor. You know, I have twins who are juniors in college. These grades wouldn't make me happy. And as a state, they don't make us happy. And again, it's, it's a call to action for us. That said, we also know that New Jersey is not at all unique in this regard. You know, you look at reports for asset management, and, you know, just remember, we're one of the original 13 colonies. Remember when we built our pipes, okay? States who are a little younger than us in the game, they'll be right behind us shortly. But we definitely have a, have a lot, a lot of work to do. And the numbers are staggering. $45 billion. You know, when we're in an economy like we are now in 2013 with all the issues facing us, it's, you know, it's, it's quite a daunting task to, to get it together. We know that our infrastructure is ailing, it's aging. We know that we have these assets, and the fact that they're not in front of us, you know, you see a bridge, you see a bridge when it has an issue, you see a roadway when it has a pothole. You know, when we know about the vulnerability of our water pipes, when a major trunk line in Monmouth County goes down, and you're in the process of having to repair it. And our friends at New Jersey American Water, I know some are in the room today, did an outstanding job in getting that trunk line back up very, very quickly. But we know, right Fred, every Friday afternoon comes that call that there's some water main break somewhere, okay? And Fred's nightmares, you know, come to roost when he hears where it is. He goes, oh my God, I hope we don't have to bypass to the X-pipe, because you know what that means. It'll be okay, Fred. It'll be okay. But asset management does provide us absolutely, you know, the effective mechanism to get there. The authority exists to do it. I think it's just the will to push it. And again, I think the, the urgency of right now will get us there. The absolute key is getting to the first phases of asset management, which is really that condition assessment and criticality analysis. And this is where we're going to be pushing. This is where you're going to see the department pushing is on these first phases. And to the extent that we can incorporate that into our permits in a way that can be, you know, fiscally responsible, and to the extent that we can bring some of those federal dollars to that process, that's what we're working on trying to do. And I mentioned inter-agency, you know, how do we marry our authority? And it goes beyond those before. I know Dan Kennedy is here from the Office of Planning Advocacy. He's been working with us, and you see we have our federal partners here as well in terms of how we, of how we move forward. Our initiatives will include policy decisions and determinations, planning, and potentially legislative and regulatory changes. And you know, that's not an easy thing to do, but where there's a will, there's absolutely a way. And our goal is to design effective and useful asset management plans that will be long-term and that will get us where we, where we need to go. The key is all about making the right investment at the right time. And this is the education part that we need to spend time in, and this is where we need your help. Because we need to get our communities to understand, right now, water is the cheapest commodity we got going out there. We need them to understand that a broken pipe will cost them more than a long-term asset management plan. And we need them to understand what resiliency means in terms of repairing their infrastructure and spending a few more cents on their dollar. And I always think the, everybody uses the same example, but, you know, one, one bottle of water costs, you know, a dollar, $1.50, maybe $2 if you're, you're out at some event or whatever. And, and we, we buy them all the time, right? We buy them all the time. What's your monthly water bill? Think about, if you just, you know, didn't buy two bottles of water, we could put it to our monthly water bill, we'd be in action. So education is extremely important, and we all need to be on the same page, and you can be so helpful to us, to us with that. Some of the other actions outside of asset management, but that clearly go with asset management, infiltration and inflow. We know this is a major stressor on our POTWs. We saw it with MCUA. So MCUA was, was inundated from a surge, but when they had all the floodwaters coming in and because of the leaks in the pipes, you know, they're having excess capacity coming to their, to their, their pump station that they just can't handle, it makes them extremely vulnerable. Any facility that's got pipes coming into them that is, that's leaky and is getting excess water in there, it's making them extremely vulnerable. So what's the answer going to be? Are we just going to build bigger POTWs and say, well, more capacity? No, if we go in and if we fix the pipes, it's the more economic way to go. So we need to look at infiltration inflow and how that plays into our, our ideas with asset management. Stormwater and green infrastructure. This is extremely important in the rebuild. And again, resiliency, resiliency, resiliency in these types of remedies. We see it all the time. If we could, we're, we're planning a white paper which will be rebuilding with the environment in mind and it'll have a lot of information on green infrastructure, whether it be for rebuilding your home or rebuilding your business or around our infrastructure. But the opportunity to engage in, in more green infrastructure and to make sure that in the rebuild, we're being acutely aware of the impact on stormwater, that will help us with the funding on the other side of all this and make us all much more resilient. CSOs, you, you heard me mention, we have our first draft permit coming out, the end of this week is our, is our goal. But down in the, in the Camden area, and this is our, this is our launch over this next year, we committed to getting our draft permits out to all of our, all those affected by, by our CSOs in the state. And we have an extremely comprehensive strategy. And again, CSOs are a stressor on the community and a stressor on the quality of our water. And in Sandy, the more we can eliminate CSOs, the more resilient the community will be. So tying it right back into that rebuild, our goal is to use some of our state revolving fund money in that special appropriation from EPA in our CSO communities to relieve those stressors and make those communities much more resilient. There was one quirky fact here though, and, and you heard Commissioner reference that. Unfortunately, with the, with the, the discharges that we had going on in the, in the days post-Sandy, which was, you know, horrible, and it dissipated quickly and Jill and her team were out there monitoring from, you know, day two through, through today, continuing to make sure our water quality is, is A-plus, which it is. But what was interesting is in the CSO communities, because they were bypassing, they weren't flooding people's basements. So this was one time where CSOs were almost like a reliever as opposed to a stressor. So again, you always got to think of everything on balance, right? Industrial discharge. We, we had the issue during Sandy, so you heard us talking about, you know, sludge and the inability to have capacity for it. Though, we got it all taken care of. People stepped up and we got it moved and we got it done. But there's a challenge when you have numerous industrial dischargers to a POTW, and we use PVSC again as an example, and you're trying to reduce the flow to the POTW, trying to relieve them so that they can rebuild, so that they can get back on the treatment where they're supposed to be. And then when you have to go and call up the industrial dischargers and ask them to reduce their flow, and these are major corporations who, you know, you ask them to reduce their flow, that's, that's ching ching, that's dollars out of their pockets. And the story I always love to tell, because we had a list of, you know, how many calls did we make, Michelle? Hundreds of calls, hundreds of calls to the dischargers to PVSC, saying to them, whatever you can do to reduce your flow. And poor Wayne Staub, my Director of Operations, called Newark Airport. You don't want to know the answer he got, so very interesting. Managing our water resources. This is so for, for, for my team, this is what it's all about. Because we've already been doing comprehensive water resource management over, over the past year and everything we did. And what we mean by comprehensive water resource management is integrating across our programs, across those three programs. When we're talking about supply, we're talking about quality and we're monitoring standards and we have this great, you know, cycle of how we assess and how we remedy and how we take the next step. And the goal here is iterative improvement of our waters. Anything we can do to keep moving the needle. So I step back and I say, we know what the stressors on our water systems are. We know what the stressors on our, on our rivers, our streams, our oceans, our lakes, on our water bodies, we know what they are. We don't, we don't have to plan and study it anymore. We know it. Let's start addressing it. What's the best way to address it in a comprehensive regional manner? How do you take a region and how do you look at the stressors to that water body in that area and start putting strategies in that is on a regional basis so that you're not doing things in a silo one-off, it's all comprehensive and all working together? And this is the direction we've been moving in and this is the direction we are forging forward with. And we learned with Sandy that if we would have been set up in a more regional basis, our recovery would have been easier. Our recovery in, in the regions that were severely impacted and the relationships in those regions and our ability to understand what resources are available in a region, who needs help in a certain region, and they all know each other in the region, helps us for, for better resiliency as well. So a couple of major wins on comprehensive water resource management. Not only does it make us, you know, resilient for the future and get us acting on what we know the stressors on our water bodies are, and recognizing their uniqueness. And the only example I can give best is Barnegat Bay, we all know Barnegat Bay, is not about industrial dischargers. TMDL, not necessarily the right remedy. Governor's 10-point plan, a step in the right direction. But now turn and look at the Raritan, okay? Industrial dischargers. Maybe a TMDL is the answer there. We know who they are, we know what we can do. And we're not just going to do it, you know, one, one stressor at a time. We're going to look at all the stressors on Raritan and who all is involved and how do we have that comprehensive plan to address it? So really great example of, if we take a, a cookie cutter approach to a statewide strategy on how we're going to clean up our water, we get nowhere. If we look in a region and we focus on the stressors and we put the right team together, we absolutely get iterative improvement. And that's the direction we are going. And this just talks a little bit more about that. Financing, so all that money at the end, Commissioner mentioned EIT, we are trying to maximize our state revolving fund. There is a special appropriation in the Sandy bill for, it was 600 million, but because of the sequestration, it's now 570 million. We are anticipating New Jersey will get approximately 40% of, of that money and we are writing our plan right now on how we're going to get that money out on the street for our facilities. But the beauty of that is we take those dollars that come to us and we leverage them through our environmental infrastructure trust and we're able to make that money two or three times the amount that we get. So our goal is to, you know, take all of the lessons learned, identify the priorities for resiliency, and leverage those federal dollars as best we can in order to move us forward. Next steps, we're vetting approaches with both industry experts like yourselves, the regulated community, like some of you also in the room. We continue to have roundtable discussions, anyone who's interested in having us come out and, and do, you know, a deeper dive with, with your, your organization. We've been at most of the trade associations. We continue to do a lot of great speaking around the state. And we invite your input. We're working very closely within DEP, outside of DEP in the state and with all of our federal partners on, on how to move forward. And there we have it. So thank you so much and I am available for some Q and A.
We have a microphone back there and Stan Cash, the gentleman who is walking towards the door is available to move the microphone around to facilitate questions. So please, if anybody has questions for the Assistant Commissioner.
I have one.
Dan, Dan Matti?
Since I'm sitting up here with a microphone. With regard to the financing issue, one of the things the council has looked at in the past is the whole issue of stormwater management. Stormwater management as it's managed right now is a property tax-funded enterprise handled through municipalities primarily. We have previously looked at the issue of stormwater utilities, stormwater utility authorities, but having a mechanism for funding that is based on the actual contribution of properties to the stormwater issue as opposed to the value of their property and whether or not in fact they pay property taxes. There are 38 other states that do this, New Jersey really does not. So has that come up in the, in the mix in the conversation?
So it's been presented to us numerous times. And what I've said to folks is, you know, find some good models, show us what they are, show us what the cost benefit analysis is. But you, you've heard our governor speak, no new taxes, and it is, no matter how we slice it, it's a tax. But that said, finding the right model and showing how maybe it's a trade-off on a benefit somewhere else. You know, we, I would never say, don't bring me a good model because I always think there's ways to work things to a good conclusion. But we know, this governor has said, no, no new taxes, no unfunded mandates, and that's what that would be.
Okay, well, I guess I would have to raise the point that we're already paying for stormwater management.
And this is, absolutely. And this is, and, and coming back to my look at it, do the cost benefit analysis of, well, maybe if it's not coming out here, but we're doing it this way, like what's the benefit on the other side? So how is the consumer, how's the taxpayer benefiting by what we're asking them to contribute over here? And if we can find a balance and we can explain that it's not new, it's a transfer to a priority, maybe we get our foot in the door.
Thank you.
I'm all for best management practices, so bring them on. Chris?
So the comprehensive water resource management scheme sounds great. It's, I'm curious how it would interface with the water quality management planning rules, parts of which were deferred by legislation.
So we are, did everyone hear that? No? Do you want to?
This is Chris Sturm, S-T-U-R-M, from New Jersey Future. So I'm just asking about the comprehensive water resource management approach and how that would interface with the water quality management planning rules, parts of which have been deferred for two years by the legislature. And that rule itself needs to be reauthorized.
So we are right now, we actually have our, our rule writing team parts identified. We're getting ready to kick it in high gear. We're acutely aware of the deadlines and what those deadlines mean. So we will be working feverishly on, on the rules to meet any appropriate deadlines. We are talking about exactly that. How do we incorporate the vision of where we want to go more comprehensively on a watershed or sub watershed basis? What does that look like? And then how does that dovetail to the existing rules? You know, and then put it through the sausage maker, what comes out on the other side? The key is, and I, I think we all know that the WQMP rules have a lot of parts in them that are duplicative of other regulatory authority and sometimes that can, you know, conflict and that's created some, some angst on both sides, whether it's on the side of the regulator or the side of the regulated industry. So what we've tried to do is really comb through the rule, identify where the correlation is to other rules where there will be a protection so that there's never a backsliding. What falls out that's left within the rule that isn't covered somewhere else? How do we address those pieces? Are they the right thing for a WQMP or not? And then how do we move forward? So we're, and in fact, my, my management team, about 45 of us this Friday, have our management retreat on exactly these issues of how we're moving forward, comprehensive water resource management in, in tandem and dovetail to WQMP. Our goal is to call the future of WQMP, comprehensive water resource management. And that's the direction we're trying to go, is to meld them together. And many of you have given us great, great thoughts on that. We have some great white papers that we've been working on and team doing a lot of, a lot of homework on that.
Good morning, Assistant Commissioner. Nick Acelta, President, Aqua Water, New Jersey, private investor, public utility, water utility. I noticed in your remarks, and I'll have testimony for the council, written testimony to submit, I'm noticing in your remarks, you mentioned 600 private.
Community water systems.
Community water systems, 300 municipal water systems. Is there any plan at the DEP to help encourage, let's say consolidation of these, these particular water utilities? Because we all know, and you did give a very good pitch for rate hike increases and the educational process, we appreciate that. Was there any plan on the DEP level to encourage that kind of consolidation? We think it's essential. We think over the long haul with the amount of infrastructure, billions of dollars, 18 billion in New Jersey that's needed, that it's going to take the private sector to get this done, not just the public sector. And I think it's short sighted just to rely on public funds because of a disaster that happened. This is a long-term issue and a long-term problem that we need guidance from government to begin the consolidation process to make sure these water companies can fulfill their commitment to their customers and the citizens of each town, that they can do these infrastructure improvements at a really low cost level. So is there any hope at DEP to engage in the private sector to do that?
So another thing that, you know, Sandy, Sandy resulted and taught us was that I think a mayor in a coastal town who is running an MUA is sitting there going, wow, is this something I really want to be doing in the future if this ever, ever happens again? And I think anecdotally, we've heard that. Anecdotally, we've heard that there are folks who are, you know, reconsidering what their view on the value of their, of their pipes and running systems and, and being able to collect that fee, but in turn, what the awesome responsibility of collecting that fee is and whether they're up to it or not. So again, we've only heard it anecdotally, but if we see that there is a sense out in the community of municipalities or public entities coming forward and saying, DEP, would you help to facilitate a discussion around public-private partnership for the future? We stand ready to do that.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Hi, Glenn Petrowski, Somerset, Raritan Valley, Sodhi Authority. I agree with you, resilience is absolutely important. And I think one of the words we have to keep with that was sustainability, because we need to be resilient and we need to be sustainable. And that brings me to the issue. In government agencies, if you're working very hard to protect your capital investments and raise money for capital investments, we tend to have a problem where local governments come along and either want to raid us with tribute or dissolve authorities and take the money which would be going for capital to other things. Is there going to be a movement from the state to try to prevent that from happening by increasing reg to DCA or something along that line?
So when, thank you very much. When, when I talked about our partnership with our sister agencies and, and where we were on October 28th and how we, how we go forward, one of those discussions is how do we, how do we work with DCA on how they exercise their regulatory authority over those entities? So we, we regulate them for quality and they set the, you know, they set that local finance structure. So they have a scorecard and we've talked about, how can we, in your scorecard, how can we ensure that municipalities either get extra points or lose points for having an asset management plan, for having done a cost benefit analysis on public-private partnership, for ensuring that there are segregated funds for their assets? So we're, we're looking at doing, doing it, we can do things easily when we can have carrots and sometimes we can use a stick. And we're looking at how do we do that through, through that process? So the answer is absolutely yes. It is incorporated within our strategy to move forward on asset management. And, you know, there'll be more action in that regard as we move forward.
Hey, I'm Chris Lennon, Hackensack River Keeper, New York, Jersey Baykeeper. And if I heard correctly, I think you said earlier that you were avoiding or trying to avoid cookie cutter approaches to resiliency. And that one of the examples that you gave is situations where a TMDL might be the best choice or it might not be the best choice depending on, I guess, what you saw on the ground. And I wonder how you reconcile that with the Clean Water Act's requirement? Do you have a TMDL where you don't meet water quality standards?
Sure. As I read the Clean Water Act, it's a TMDL or other, I always get these words wrong, but it's other measurable, other measurable actions that could lead to meeting the water quality standards. Do I have that right, Jill? There's those magic words?
Other enforceable measures.
Thank you. Other enforceable measures. So that's how we interpret the Clean Water Act. That's how, that's how we operate. And in some regards, you know, we don't think the TMDL is the right answer because the other enforceable measures are stronger.
Hi, I'm Heather Safrat with Clean Ocean Action. And as a follow-up to that question, I'm wondering what are those enforceable measures that you do plan to be taking in the Barnegat Bay and also the Hudson? Before you had indicated that the Barnegat Bay wasn't going to be pursued for a TMDL because there weren't many industrial sources. However, previously DEP had indicated that they were pursuing a TMDL despite knowing there weren't many industrial sources. And also it appears that DEP has stalled on the Hudson TMDL process that's been ongoing for 10 years, even though there are many industrial dischargers. So could you please explain, you know, how you see making effective action in both the Hudson and Barnegat Bay?
So, so our first goal, when we talk about comprehensive water resource management, we need to prioritize the, the water bodies of the state because we can't do everything at one time again. We will get nowhere. So when we, what we're doing is we're trying to establish a matrix that will allow us to chart, if you will, our stressors by watershed, give maybe, you know, quantitative value to chart, if you will, our stressors by watershed, give maybe, you know, quantitative value to that, qualitative value to that, to identify where the focus in the state needs to be and then what are the best remedies toward that. I think we can pretty much guess that some of the water bodies at issue are the Raritan, the Hudson, Barnegat Bay, you know, that we, without a heck of a lot of homework, I'm guessing they're going to bubble right up to the top and we're already talking about a strategy around Raritan. And we have started to tee up, you know, discussion around Hudson as well. And there's been a lot of work done on Hudson, as you know, relative to TMDLs. So, you know, there's a lot of homework that is going on. In terms of, you know, specifics right now, I can't say what the other enforceable measure would be if we haven't created the strategy for that watershed just now. I think the Governor's 10-point plan on Barnegat Bay is an example of certain aspects of what are other enforceable measures. I think passing the fertilizer law statewide had a tremendous impact, one we will not see the result of for a few years. But you got to start somewhere. And again, iterative, as long as we can keep showing we're getting better, there's no magic bullet when it comes to water, it's impossible. So, you know, being comprehensive and looking at what those types of other enforceable measures could be may be a better solution than a TMDL.
This is really easy, maybe to close it out.
Dave Shade, Lewis Berger Group. I would like to share this presentation with folks in my organization. Are you going to post something like this?
Well, this is, I mean, this is a public hearing. We are open to the public, so my PowerPoint can be, you know, put up on our website or emailed to whomever. I've shared it here in a public meeting, so it is a, you know.
That would be wonderful. And any of the, you know, early information on the guidance documents?
Yes, yeah. And the guidance documents are, you know, we are, we're really close, we're just getting into our full legal review right now. We're very, very anxious to get them out there because folks are starting to rebuild right now. And again, we want continuing feedback, just like we've been getting all along the way. So thank you very much, we'll make that available.
Right. And the Clean Water Council also has a website, so we will be posting the public aspect of the testimony as well as our report on the website.
So before we, before you do your break, I just want to let everyone know, again, thank you so much for your attention and participation. Your input is extremely important to our ability to move forward and your partnership is extremely important as well. Unfortunately, I can't stay for the balance of the hearing this morning, so I have to attend a funeral at 11 o'clock. But my team is all around the room. We get a transcript from today. And as we've always done in the past, you know, the information you give us today is meant to help inform how we go forward. So thank you for sharing.
Thank you very much. We will now take a brief break. We were hoping for 15, it's going to be closer to 10 so that we can stay on task. Thank you so much.